Should I repeat that again?
Yeah.
Sorry, I got excited. Okay, here we go. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. If you would like to address the planning commission this evening during the public comment period or for an item that is on the agenda, we request that you fill out a green speaker request card and turn it into staff prior to the agenda item. This meeting is being recorded and viewing is will be in Zoom. The planning commission will receive public comment through email submitted prior to the meeting to staff or in person. Public comments will not be accepted via Zoom. Can we get roll call, please?
Rick B. Sadi.
Here.
Gerard Madden. Sense. Aras Harmon.
Present.
Mary Johnson.
Present.
Thomas Kuhn.
Present.
And Kelly Luthine.
Okay.
Okay, I'm here too, by the way.
Yes. All right, I was saving the best to last.
Ah, there you go. I appreciate that. Okay, folks, can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance and Commissioner Arment, if you can lead us in the pledge, I would be proud of it.
I pledge allegiance to the people of Hawaii. Can I say so? It's a very important for which stands one nation. The God will give us all the liberty and justice of our own.
All right, item number one, approval of minutes from our meeting of October fifteen, twenty twenty four. There any edits or corrections or changes needed? Want to take a look? If not, I'm happy to entertain the motion to approve the minutes from October.
I would be happy to go through those minutes.
One second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, October fifteen, twenty twenty four. All those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
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 All right, with the eyes take it. Item number five, public comment for items not on the agenda. Individuals are allowed three minutes. It is the planning commission's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the commission from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law. I can see a big crowd out here right now, so I want to make sure that anybody who wants to address, do we get anything emailed or anything at all?
No.
All right, quick scan, I've seen it. To item number six. Item six, announcements of conflicts of interest. Do any commissioners have a conflict of interest that they would like to share with the commission? All right. Okay. All right. All right, just for the record, seven oh four, Commissioner Madden has just joined us. Moving right along to see, moving along to number seven, public hearings, seven A amendments to Title twelve. Consideration of an amendment to Title twelve, Article three of the San Bruno Municipal Code to implement Housing Element Program ten B of the twenty twenty three, twenty thirty one. How's an element related to deferred impact fees? And Michael, should I read the rest of that or? That we?
That's probably fine.
All right.
So, Mr. Chair, members of the commission have to be presenting this item. The slides might not be as long as the reading of the items. It's a pretty straightforward. Next slide, please. So, program ten B, text is on the screen, it's also in the staff report. To establish a deferred payment of city impact fees for basically any housing project that we are, that are, is listed in the housing element as one of our housing sites. Now, our ordinance already has a process where that state law already allows certain projects with lots of criteria to meet that. Part of our negotiations, they to the, they wanted us to do this. It's not a huge issue since there's already a number of projects that are able to do it anyway. So subsection D is being added to the existing ordinance. And for the most part, I would, I would just roughly estimate that this will allow ten to fifteen percent more of the housing projects to use this process. As I said, the existing state law, existing ordinance let most already do it, but there's a variety of exceptions and details we have to go through to figure out if it qualifies or not. Now it's simple, if you're in the housing element, housing on the site, you're qualified. And that's just, it's easier for all parts. Next slide, power it up, click please. While making the slides, I realized that an error was made in the ordinance document. The word certification was used and it should be certificate. If this is passed, we would take to counsel a typo correction that we meant to say certificate. Next slide. With that, recommend you take public comment. Staffs available for any questions and comments from the commission? And then request the commission take action recommending counsel amend the section of the ordinance to implement the housing on the purpose. Please staff's communication.
Okay, thank you. Are there any clarifying comments from commission before we go to public comment? Not seen any. Okay, I'm gonna just formally. Sorry, I'm gonna open public comment. I don't see anybody there.
Do we need a motion?
Motion to close, yeah.
I'm happy to move to close public comment on this item.
All right, little motion, we have a second, all those in favor? Okay, bring it back to the commission for any questions and possible action.
Really, Chair, I mean, this just seems like a common sense item. I mean, I think that there's an argument that this should kind of be general policy of project, even for not, even for not on the housing element sites that, you know, like you don't necessarily do pay the impact fees until it's actually certain you're going to have the impact because the project is getting built. Like, you know, paying the impact fees earlier creates risk, but the project might be canceled for other reasons and so I think this is obviously a good move and I would actually suggest that we consider expanding this policy further.
So, through the chair. Oh, so actually, the way it's typically done is you pay when you hold permits. Almost all jurisdictions happen on that way. So this, this wouldn't really be a risk for them to not succeed with the project. It's not like that, but it is advantageous. I think the primary benefit to the developer is an interest on it. Right, so there is that construction interest, ten percent something. Sorry, so there's a number of benefits.
Mark was put down, Nina is going to take over, so anyone else have a? Comment, observation, question?
Just clarifying, it was recommended by HCU.
It was, it was requested specifically that we find ways to give advantages to projects that were listing in the housing element. To, to, to make it in their mind more likely those projects get built. From Mark's perspective, as long as housing projects get built of the number that we're shooting for, we're happy. It doesn't, from our perspective, it doesn't have to be the exact sites we listen to housing element, but the state still wanted us to find ways to give even a marginal advantage to those on the list.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'm happy to move to, we have a specific language for this one. Approved.
What's an city council?
Yeah. I would be happy to move that we forward this to the city council with the recommendation to approve, including the typo correction.
We have a second?
Hold on a second.
Any motion, second?
All right, so a motion and a second.
Did you have any?
No. Motion and a second, and it can be.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Aye. Yes, I do.
Aye.
Brother. Aye.
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 All right.
Oh, no, this is all right.
Nice, having went along to seven, sorry, eight, conductive business. Eight A prioritization, five years long range planning initiatives.
Yes, I can do this one as well. Next slide, please. In November, we had the joint meeting with the council where we talked about a number of long range planning initiatives. These were the items, these are now ordered in the prioritization staff recommend they be in. They were ordered at the study session in the order we were presenting them, which is why it was different order. And one of the lessons I take from that is I will make the consultants sit longer. Not try to get their smaller things out first, because I think that had we gone through this list in order, it might have been beneficial for all parties. But we are where we are now, because of the lateness of the hour. We said we bring the discussion of the prioritization to the commission and then take your recommendation on the council. To reiterate, this is not the order in which they will be completed. They're the order in which if something happens that one of them needs special attention. If number seven needs special attention, we are not going to take it away from the resources working on one through six. If number one needs special attention, it's such a priority, we are prioritizing that and it could result in change to the schedule of the others. Having said all that, we still are holding to the timeframes that we provided in November, are the expected timeframes? As was noted, a lot of questions about, hey, could this one be faster? Yes, if it were alone. Certain ones could absolutely be faster, but we, we're trying to anticipate things. If it turns out we can actually bring things forward faster than we projected, we absolutely will. But this is important primarily for council, their goal setting and their their understanding that if something happens to number two. Again, we think it's such a priority that if that means the climate action plan or another item gets pushed out in a couple weeks, a month, we would do that because of the prioritization. We have the other slides as well that have the tables and the timelines and stuff, if there's any to go there. But at this point, we'll just jump to the recommendation. The recommendation is that you provide your input on what do you think the prioritization, you know, could be, it could be as simple as go with what staff's presenting, you chase the order in any way. This is informational, so if you want to make certain items the same number, that's actually not a problem. Because again, this is just, this isn't a binding set of numbers. So with that, staffs available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from commission?
Let's go here. Just a very quick question, the fiscal years, those, did those start on January or here?
So fiscal years is July one to July, to June, June thirtieth.
That sounds like an extra.
Commissioner Madden, I mean, Arment.
Um, yeah, it might be useful to kind of include on some of those tables, like the calendar quarters as well, but can you remind me, I think the one, two, three, four, if I'm remembering what the details of format seems correct, can you remind me what the benefits are and the obligations to the state? Or five and six, I mean, that was the only one where I was like, should those be flipped?
Yeah, so. So number five, we're not required to have a climate action plan. Having one opens up funding opportunities and council had it as a priority. Therefore, of the ones that did have kind of very tight deadlines, staff put it at the top. The community-based transportation plan is a different agency, therefore our involvement is not as, as much. We're in some ways compliant. But that could equally be, like, if five, six and seven were made five, five, five. That, that's, that's kind of how, that, that wouldn't change how we argue. And then the safety element, again, we are not the lead. It's a joint effort of multiple groups. Arguably, because we're not the lead and it's a joint effort, if we had to take some staff person off the project for a week to put him on something, we would do that, hoping it wouldn't actually. So it truly is the top four and then the bottom three.
Yeah, and, and that was one where there was the conversation around, do we want to try to meet, I feel like it was like tier two versus tier three because of the. Yeah, which that was deemed important as well in the longer conversation with the council. So I think overall this seems sensible.
So if I'm reading this right, everything except, you know, development tracking, housing element will be done before January twenty sixth, so basically these will all be completed next year. Other than.
Yes, if all goes well, it will all be, all be done really by this time of next year.
Yeah, because I was whining in the meeting a lot about how long things take and it just, but seeing it this way, I feel a little better now, so.
Any other questions before we go to public comment? Okay. Opening of the comment. And motion to close public comment, please.
You have to close public comment.
Motion and a second, all those in favor? If we, a break, so break, sorry, I'm going to the next slide, I'm bringing it back to planning permission. Do we need to motion to agree on that order or?
It's recommendation.
Just a recommendation.
The recommendation, the agenda is that we, we adopt a motion to recommend this prioritization of councils, which I am happy to move to endorse the prioritization as been advised now.
I'll be the second, beautiful. All right, we get our, thank you, Commissioner Arment, we get our roll call, please.
Sure, Commissioner Luthine.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Madden.
Aye.
Commissioner B. Sadi.
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon.
Aye.
Commissioner Kuhn.
Aye.
And Chair DeRosa.
Aye.
Thank you. I'm moving to item eight B, planning here to the bylaws, review, review and discussion or revision to planning commission bylaws.
Okay, next slide. So, present this item, I'll just be going through some background. The discussion will just be a discussion of the items that will be changing in the bylaws and then I'll be concluding with our recommended action. Next slide. So, and then by way of background, the city council approves bylaws for the planning commission. The last time that my commission bylaws were updated was twenty fifteen. The updates are recommended at this time to better reflect the current PC functions. And we've also removed sections that are duplicative of the municipal code. And we actually included in your staff report a copy of the municipal code, so you could see what, what things are covered there. Next slide, please. So some of, so we, there were a lot of changes, as you can see probably from the red line version, but we just wanted to highlight just the most significant ones. The compensation that has been changed to remove proctor services, which I don't think any of the planning commissioners have done recently. And towards planning commissioners are eligible for reimbursement of expenses as part of your official duties. The next one, subcommittee formation. We've updated this to better reflect the way subcommittees are formed, namely through, you know, the community development department or through the city council. Absences for meetings, this has also been updated to be more comparable with similar changes to the bylaws of the other committees and commissions of the city. So this would be updated to be three unexcused, instead of three unexcused or six excused would be updated to two unexcused or four excused absences within a year. And that's just for regular meetings, so that does not include any special meetings. Order of business. Changes per made to that to better reflect our current agenda format and the order of agenda items. Next slide, please. There was a section in there about adding agenda items at the meeting, at the meeting, which is it can be, it's kind of illegal under the Brown Act, so I think we'd better to take that one out. Rules for the public, so this is, this was, this enforcement were the most significant updates in that the protocol is not, the existing bylaws allow the chair to, you know, basically eject the person from the meeting, which, you know, to make sure that everyone, they were abiding by First Amendment rights. You know, individuals have a right to speak, even though it may not be agreeable, as long as they're not threatening. We've, you know, recommending changing that to if there's a person that's very, you know, animated and he's been asked to to calm, calm down or whatever. Then if it, if it continues to escalate, the chair could call for a recess and take a break. We could at that point call law enforcement if there's a feeling that there may be a need to have the person removed from the meeting. So that, again, that's probably one of the most significant changes. Next slide, please. So with that, we're just recommending that you open public comment, discuss and provide any comments that you have to staff and then make a motion to recommend to the city council the bylaws.
Thank you very much. Any clarifying questions from commission before we go to public comment?
Through the chair.
Please.
It's not so much clarifying as much as acknowledging the facts and I really appreciate that clarification that's come out of this. They make sure it makes sense and they would want to acknowledge and appreciate what you're submitting on the scenes.
Okay, I'm gonna open public comment.
No, both come on?
Better for handle, no. Halloween already passed. Okay, I don't see any motion and close public comment.
Motion close. Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, bringing it back to commission for additional questions, comments and recommendation.
Sure.
Please.
Yeah, I have a question on the excused and unexcused absence, I'm just in meetings before unexpectedly a calendar issue with my software. So who do we, I don't even know if I have your cell numbers to let you know I'm not going to make it. How do we go about, you know, or what's the procedure for saying we're not gonna do it? If say we're stuck in traffic and we can't get to our email or something like that, is there a way to let you know we're not?
Yeah, we should, yes, we can, we definitely have to make cell phone numbers available. Yeah, I know we don't currently do that, I, you know, just kind of rely on emails that I receive before the meeting, but but as you're saying, if there was a problem.
Yeah, like tonight, I was a few minutes late to the car crash on two eighty, so you know, sometimes it gets really bad, you can't make it at all, just wondering. So this, is there a timeframe for the excused absence versus a non-excused absence? Is it, like, how, how soon prior to the meeting does that need to be made?
It could even be the day of.
The day of.
Right.
Okay, so there's no like cutoff time, like three hours before.
Just that we know, not sitting waiting, okay.
So basically a no show, it's a non-excused.
I would think, I mean, part of the point of having the excuse absence is knowing what items you're going to be able to schedule for that meeting, I would think, but so I, I feel like in terms of providing the excuse, like when the, once the agenda is published and the items are locked in, I don't know, I mean, sort of seems like that, that it's a reasonable cutoff, I suppose, if they just say up to the minute meeting starts, but.
Yeah, we don't, I mean, yeah, we don't put a lot of other qualifiers in here to, in order to keep it, just keep it simple to allow for that flexibility, I think.
Okay, so, and then say someone does have more than two unexcused absences, who is the one that calls for their room?
Well, ultimately, it's going to be the city council's decision, so we'd have to.
Is the text that, that if you have two unexcused, then it's done?
Yeah, the number shall be vacated.
Yeah, so there's no, it's not.
So you're gone.
But they, they could decide to reappoint, they could forgive you and reappoint you ID votes.
Yes, yeah. And we would want to, well, I don't know that it will go in the bylaws. We'll put together something that clearly says unexcused would, would, in my mind, would, as Michael said, would not be you call just before saying, hey, I'm on the way, but I'm in traffic. That to me shouldn't be unexcused.
And that's not even necessarily an absence, it's just arriving late.
But let's say, let's say it leads to you not making it at all, or, or you call right before you just came out with something. Unexcused, I think, would be you didn't show and we didn't hear from you the entire meeting. Excused, I think we would say is anything short of that, because things, you know, do come up. The comment about, yes, it's very helpful for us to know that we're at least gonna always have four. Us, but I think the theory is hopefully four of you won't on the same night happy to last minute with them. Your name come up.
Through the, through the chair.
Yes.
And we did have like an item that got deferred, I think, for two consecutive meetings because of exactly because there were members who were accused from it as well as absences. And so I guess that, that sort of was on my mind of like, be helpful for planning purposes and for the, the people whose items were trying to be considered to like have some certainty about them.
Through the chair, please. You, you know about the situation last year, end of the previous year. You know, I ran into a whole email situation where my, my city email was just malfunctioning, I didn't know that. My email got fixed and then it glitched again, I didn't know that. So it caused a couple of no shows, I didn't know that it was, it was just my first time, like thirty eight years or something. It was so embarrassing, it was horrible. The moment I found out I called, but it's a unusual situation, but I could have been, I probably had two no shows. So.
But I think it's also important, it's Michael, these are regular, so these would be the ones that are like on this list here. There are times where we schedule a special one where you only know what's happening because of email, that's a special meeting and that's not counted towards the the absence. Now, we still want to work through processes to make sure we minimize that as much as possible, so I think we should, we should talk more about, about that.
I think all the confession is coming out right now, right? But I mean, I, I just really make a point of checking everything on the first, the third regardless, I just now look at everything. And one of the times on the agenda at the city, on the website, it said canceled and it wasn't. Because it had been canceled and they put it back in and it wasn't called, so I really ran into just a series of.
Well, I, I think even like with this meeting, our regular meeting was canceled because the regular meeting is supposed to be at the rack. And we call this a special meeting so we can have it here, which ironically would mean if someone missed this. Today it would not count.
Right, right.
But, but it does lead to also the confusion if you look at, if you go online and look through agendas, you see it canceled. There happens to be another one there that says special, but it, it's confused. The good news on that is there's a very high likelihood that our next meeting is going to, the rack will be ready for our next meeting, therefore it will be regular, therefore we won't have to do the cancellation of the special. But I think we're gonna work through something where not only do we get, give a list of multiple contacts, but maybe we even encourage everyone to. Uh but maybe we even encourage everyone to uh have a backup email. Uh and we'll send the agendas to both of them.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we do that for two two right now.
Yeah.
It's um. And that works because I just look back to my other one and it's not on there, it is on my. I was gonna have a question.
I'm wondering if I could just I map my city email directly into my Gmail.
But if, but then if there was something that caused. Us not to get you that one email, just mapping it would.
Yeah.
Us us sending it to both would would.
Would there be any? Was it grown at communications problems by sending it to the personal email?
As long as it's, as long as it's always copied to the official box, they can definitely.
One publicly official, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, w- we would be blind copying, uh so so.
Yeah, yeah, like blind copying, yeah.
So even if you replied to us, only we would see it, so there's no Brown Act issue there, so.
Would they be concerned with them, like, public request for information, or does it become public record?
Unless it ends up at a court case, like actually in court, uh those type of emails are always. Always redacted.
The question is uh texting, now I do get uh from city council only how many going on a good tax. Is there ever any option to texting on on a commission?
We can certainly look into that.
Today's for, you know.
Because. Because if if we had that, then you would get a text saying the agenda's been posted, then if you go and look at the email, it's not there. You could at least turn it, turn it to post, and you can let us know and we can find a way to get it over to you.
So, I think, question on clarifying the absences and the process to notify folks. So normally, it's, you know, I'll send an email to Michael and be like, I have a conflict that day, I can't be there, editing here. In order to be excused, must notify the chair and secretary of the anticipated absence, so moving forward. In January, if I were to miss that meeting, I would have to notify Michael and the chair that's nominated tonight, so those two people would have to be.
Contributing.
Yeah.
Right. That's a little bit different, normally, it's like, hey, Michael, it can be there without the chairs. And so both those folks have to be notified, and then it must be noted during the call, the role, the main role call. Okay. Uh question about the the subcommittees, subject to approval, community development director. Been here for a little bit, and I was new to me, has there ever been a history of planning commission? Decided upon himself to create a subcommittee and what was that for and what prompted that, I just, I didn't know if he can do that, but um, you know, I was reading in the bylaws.
I think I have talked, talked to you, Mary Lou, about, you're you're a recollection, and I think you you had said that. Back in the day, that sometimes there was, there were sites at committees to discuss a large development project.
Right, um but it was uh it was. It was noted and stated, it wasn't, it wasn't done without public information.
Hmm.
But it's never been done, but we kept to do it on our own, and you know, that's the origin, like, studies.
Through through the chair, the A R C was extending subcommittee with rotating membership, and we have. The uh cross, I don't know exactly what term, but we had their back, um advisory committee, which is now disbanded, which include membership from our committee. Uh been around.
So, I think there was one committee for like, you know, awards.
Yeah, oh, that's right.
Hang on, that one's a link to that, yeah, that one's also cross-functional, it has delegates from existing standing committee.
Yeah, and 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 those, those, I believe, all had uh. Those would not be planning commission subcommittees, because they're.
Yeah, they're they're a different thing, but. I did, I guess they, that sort of committee is, has a separate authorizing ordinance for at the level of the city.
Any other questions or comments? Uh so anyone would like to make a motion?
Do we, do we need to include the suggestion of of changing that um staff and chair, the staff or chair?
If if there's, if there's interest in that, then then my request would just be that we just say staff. Because what I wouldn't want to have happened is the chair finds out about one, and then we find out about a couple.
Right.
And then, then we don't have one group that that knows about all of them.
Staff.
Staff is our.
I agree. That you wanna articulate?
Yeah, I so with that suggestion of striking out the and chair portion of the notice, I'm happy to move that we adopt the amendments to the violence. And ask the city council to. Incorporate them into your.
Thank you, do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have a second? Um, I can, will you roll call, please?
Uh Commissioner Kuhn.
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon.
Aye.
Commissioner Beasadi.
Aye.
Commissioner Madden.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Luthi.
Aye.
And Chair DeRosa.
Aye. All right, the eyes have it, uh moving right along to item number nine. Uh nominations for chair and vice chair for twenty twenty five. Um so um it's time to uh turn over the chair and vice chair roles on the commission. You, we just go through the nominations or what, how do we process?
Well, you could ask your colleagues for.
I was, I was actually.
For nominations, for you can.
Speaking of absences, I was at Disneyland when I got nominated last year. I got an email at Disneyland saying they're here. That's what you get for being at Disneyland. So folks, do we uh on the planning commission, gentlemen, do we have any um? Uh why don't we start with the chair, do we have any nominations toward chair for twenty twenty five?
Okay, you don't want that. I'm I'm attempting to nominate, wish I could. Didn't you ring?
Um. Um.
I think I also make a great chair, too. Have you chaired before?
I have, I chaired eighty twenty two, you know, four weeks.
That's right, that's right. I was just before you.
That's correct. I could, I could, I could nominate you, Kelly, we can, we can repeat the cycle.
Do I understand that Commissioner Commissioner Kuhn is is not.
Cause I was, I was.
It's not, I think it.
You know what, I I'm a little concerned about uh additional work that's needed. Like, uh you know, if there's any additional prep or anything, um I have a baby tubbing in about six weeks.
Congrats.
You bet.
Congratulations.
Um, so, yeah.
Okay. Just, just like around that, I think, I might not be very good.
Yeah.
We do, it is a little extra work, I mean, you need to deal with getting the minutes signed, and you do need, like. It becomes more important that you really read through the packet on like the Sunday or Monday before to kind of. Um I also made myself. As I was doing it, I would duplicate it, I would sort of do two copies of the packet and then like. Um cut one down, so that I just have like the agenda and the recommendation, so like, so I have a version of the document, like it's go through to get the recommendation. It's a little, it's a little extra work, but it's like half an hour extra work.
Like, as I just, for that first quarter, like, they'll, but you can't let me have it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, they're they're, see, that's understandable, though.
Fair enough.
I'm happy to to nominate Kelly Lipin for chair. You don't want it either. Am I, am I just gonna be chair by default because nobody else wants it?
I don't worry, I just, I'm so uncomfortable taking meetings. We really need somebody.
Um, I'm I'm happy to nominate Rick. Um.
Richard did it.
No, when I was, was like a few years ago, a few years ago.
Few years ago.
Um, just to put that out there.
Does anybody wanna do it? Does anyone have a burning desire to be the chair of the planning?
I'm willing.
You know, this is the first time this has happened, we've always just rotated, you know, it just is, it's always been just a process, and then you can. You can bypass it, you didn't have to.
I mean, if you want me to be chair, I'm happy to just be chair on an ongoing basis.
Well, you would say, you know, the first time in my history, so that would be great, to see someone doing it twice.
If the position of my colleagues is that they would like me to do it, I'm happy to do it.
That's true.
I think perfect.
The bylaws, the bylaws don't say it has to rotate, it's just tradition, right?
It's just, it's just tradition. I know that we nominate the office for. I'll pick a chair.
Second.
All right, we do a nomination and a second, and we do um.
Yeah, we do, yeah, I guess we could do, we could do a roll call.
Do we, do we, do we do the chair and and vice chair separately, or do we adopt the same stuff?
Um, let's.
Yeah, well, it's separate, yeah, with the vice.
You're not, you're not the chair yet, man. Uh we have a motion and a second, this is a roll call, unless there's anyone else with any other nominations, roll call.
Uh Commissioner Kuhn.
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon.
Aye.
Commissioner Beasadi.
Aye.
Uh Chair DeRosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Madden.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipin.
Aye.
Okay.
Michelle Harmon, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, uh nominations for vice chair for twenty twenty five.
My baby will be a year old.
To do vice chair.
I will nominate Commissioner Kuhn for vice chair.
I'll second.
All right.
Any, we do, we do any, yes?
All right, um favorite nomination.
Okay, I'll try, I'll try not to the absence at least, I'm afraid, yeah.
Um.
Second, I'll second.
We got a second, right? Did we?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I know, yeah, so we got a motion and a second, unless there's any other expression or nominations, we can go to roll call.
Okay.
Commissioner Luthi.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Madden.
Aye.
Chair DeRosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Beasadi.
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon.
Aye.
And Commissioner Kuhn.
Aye.
All right, congratulations. Well, um, thank you, folks, moving right along to item eleven, comments from members.
Uh, well, ten staff.
Oh, I did that, sorry, number ten, comments from staff, approval of twenty twenty five meeting calendar, thank you.
Yeah, so we have the twenty twenty five meeting calendar, um there are some. Uh council dates that will be changing, but all of the planning commission dates, I believe, are correct on here. Uh and there don't appear to be any conflicts, you know, with Thanksgiving. Uh Christmas or any of that, so. I don't know, you're not, yeah, maybe you don't necessarily need to approve it. Yeah, okay, except.
Appreciate.
Chandler, la- last year, our November one landed in the same week with Thanksgiving, but it looks like that is not the case, it's already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, there is one other item from staff, we um, this is a bittersweet one, I. Um I decided to join my wife in retirement in January, so. So I have enjoyed uh working with all of you through COVID, that was uh, I started, you know, uh three and a half years ago. So uh working, doing the meetings on on Zoom from home. But I've enjoyed working with all of you, I I've always appreciated planning commissioners and. And especially this group of planning commissioners because of your dedication to the city. I I've always marveled at, you know, the fact that I, as a staff member, get paid. To, you know, to do this, but you, all of you are just, you know, you're giving, giving your time to the veteran of your community, and that's really commendable, I. I've always held planning commissioners in high esteem because of, because of that, so. So I've enjoyed working with you, I've enjoyed uh hopefully helping you work through some, some issues. Uh along the way and as far, and also some uh, you know, some some projects that we liked and didn't like, so. So anyway, but.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
You've been great to work with, such such a nice guy, so thank you for everything.
Yeah, I really appreciate having some some well-earned rest and travel.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And go to Michael's.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
No Michaels.
No Michaels, no.
So who's uh taking over your spot, do we know, or? Is there a search out there nationwide?
So Kelly's gonna be interim planning manager.
Oh, oh, congratulations.
Oh, that's why she's here.
I beg Rachel's.
So Kelly will be.
Okay, and then, and then Galen, yes, so Galen's our. Our analyst, uh for our department, and he's making a fabulous job of keeping us all in order.
Keeping them on.
And uh and managing this remodel and also other other uh long-range planning things such as the planned action plan, contracts and. All of that, so, yeah, great, great asset.
Welcome.
Well, yeah, and this is, I don't know that I've seen you around a ton, I think I've seen you at some meeting or other, you're, how long have you been most?
Uh I've been here for a little over a year now, so, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's.
Yeah, by year.
I'm not crazy, so like, you haven't been here that long, you've been like, it's nice to see you.
And then I know some of you from my time here about three years ago, but a few of you are new to me, too, but I uh worked on the rack, I did some zoning code updates. So very familiar with the city, I'm trying to.
Kelly and I saw you a bunch.
Yep. Those of you who are on the rack subcommittee, yeah.
Yeah. Great, right, right, so we have um, so comments from members?
The best of luck and enjoy your retirement, they recommend it highly. I'm a planning commissioner in your own city.
Yeah, San, San Francisco.
Oh, God.
Any, any other comments, folks? So we're gonna number twelve, chairman, the next regular meeting will be January twenty first, twenty twenty four, and the location will be, we'll see you call. Happy holidays.
Or or the rack. Location will likely be the rack.
Location will likely be the rack, thank you, folks, happy holidays.
Thank you.